Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, November 30th, 2022. All council meetings will continue to be livestreamed on the city's website. Our first order business is roll call with a clerk, please take the roll.
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Uh, here.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Our next order business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers of the rules the council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council and profoundly will not be permitted. After you are called, please restate your name and provide your neighborhood for the record. You will be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Good morning. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the purpose of government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. The Bon Air Memorial Green Space is the solution for peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Without that, there is no valid governance. Open deals in Bon Air. Councilman Kraus managed a deal to gain McKinley Park from us. Now we want a green space in place of the detrimental school building. Acquire Bon Air School for $1, tear it down, use Pittsburgh Trees and Parks tax money to make a green space. This was read at my husband's funeral. Retired Deputy Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting in all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name and was always approachable regardless of rank. If you had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life as his obituary so accurately described. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. Join our supporters, Mayor Gamy, Councilman Coghill, and State Representative Benham for the creation of a green space. The Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of our community. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Elena Zaitsov.
I'm Elena Zaitsov. I live in the Oak Cliff neighborhood of South Oakland. Today, I'm addressing you regarding Bill 2022-0592, the zoning portion of the Oakland Plan, which will be before you for a vote. What I have learned during the process of the Oakland Plan is that city planners and the Planning Commission do not care what this plan does to the Oak Cliff neighborhood. Oak Cliffers were lied to by city planners as we were told residential parcels in Oak Cliff would not be rezoned. Please amend the bill to remove Parcels 28P-27, 28P-33, 28P-36, and 28P-9 from UCMU. Is it a coincidence that all are owned by the same developer? That owner can see an economic benefit while Oak Cliffers won't be able to see anything as it gets walled in. The Planning Commission voted to recommend UCMU despite the fact that some members said they needed more time to understand it but would trust city council to do the right thing. At a later meeting on the Oakland Plan, it became apparent not all Planning Commission members realized what was in UCMU. They were surprised by the height allowed adjacent to two-story houses. Oakland residents deserve better effort than that. Do you, as city council members, care what happens to the Oak Cliff neighborhood even if it isn't in your district? I'm asking you to care and to do the right thing for us. At the public hearing in September, all three Oakland RCOs as well as the University of Pittsburgh had issues with the plan. That tells me a lot more work is needed. I realize my questions won't get answered, but please consider them. Why is it okay that Oakland residents lose the protection of residential compatibility while other neighborhoods still have it? Recently, a Shadyside neighborhood was able to have a development change because of residential compatibility. How can it be legal that we will not have the protections other city neighborhoods have? Why is it okay that residential parcels are going to be rezoned? Please remove Parcels 28P-27, 28P-33, 28P-36, and 28P-9 from UCMU as well as Wellsford Street. Why is it okay that UCE zoning on the Boulevard of the Allies from Halcat towards town allowing buildings 210 feet high is across from residential Oak Cliff, walling it in? It needs to be changed to UCMU. Again, I ask for your consideration for long-term tax-paying residents. The Oakland Plan has two parts: suggestions that could be beneficial to residents that are unfunded, have no legal backing or assurance they will happen, and the zoning before you which is beneficial to developers and is definite. My final question to you is this: why the rush to benefit the developers to the detriment of your constituents? It is within council's power to make amendments benefiting residents. Please...
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Bill Schlatter.
Good morning. My name is Bill Schlatter. I'm from the Mount Washington resident. And I'm calling because on April 16th, you introduced a bill for short-term rentals. And this was introduced under a, um, "We're gonna move quickly. We're gonna, we're gonna get this resolved." And here we are, over seven months later in November. And it's a bit of a disappointment that if this is something that is supposed to be acting quickly, we're moving at a snail's pace. And I truly hope today is the day that this bill moves forward out of committee. I have asked on behalf of many residents here in Mount Washington that the short-term rental bill include the language that primary residence is required for an Airbnb. This is language that was suggested as well by Councilwoman Teresa Kells Smith. It is also language that is used in cities across the country such as in Philadelphia, Denver, Nashville. They did this because this allowed better protection for the neighborhoods. What is happening on Mount Washington and in other communities is you have corporations buying up neighborhoods and houses, taking them away off the market from everyday residents. And this contributes to the affordable housing crisis which is indeed happening in Pittsburgh like in other cities. Additionally, I request that the language around limiting Airbnbs or, or, or placing better language around the need for, um, you know, fine-tuning around a hotel, right? So if you have an apartment building that is five units or more, that's essentially a hotel. So you're gonna have Airbnbs being guised as a, as a hotel and they're not paying the hotel tax. And that's an issue that we all have up here on Mount Washington. And we're not, we're not happy about the Airbnbs taking over the community because they are really just corporations holding these properties. So I urge you today to move forward with this bill. It's been over seven months and it's a shame that this had to even come up because of a tragedy. But here we are, seven months later. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You will also be given three minutes to speak.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's up in the Hill District at the top of Beaufort. Um, I came today because yesterday there was a bill that Mrs. Gross, it was under Mrs. Gross, the very first bill. It's something about a plan that she wrote that I think that's for affordable housing. Well, I am requesting to be able to see that plan if possible. Also, I am, am really concerned about how I've been treated here. And then I went to county council and I went over there and I was speaking about how I had took petitions to Mr. Watson, Dewitt, they call him Dewitt, or whatever they call him, um, from, when we wanted transportation from at the top of the hill to get down to Mercy Hospital at the bottom. Okay, so there's a new president of council, but they were very pleasant. And he had said, um, you know, council, maybe, maybe we should write to the bus company. Then he thought about it. He said, no, wait a minute, Dewitt, this is your neighborhood. And would you write a letter to the bus company? And he screamed, I mean, he hollered, "No, I will not. Can't no one come down here and tell me what my neighborhood needs. I am the representative." And he said, "In fact, that building needs security. That's, that's security. They need security. A bus is a low priority. Security is the, the priority." And then he said it would take a million dollars to have a bus to take us from up, from down to the bottom of the hill, which I know he's exaggerating because he wanted to make it look bad. I didn't say a bus. What about shuttle? We used to have shuttles. We used to have buses that took up in the hill, took them to church on, that's the Sunday bus they had. Then they had buses that went through the neighborhood. But we don't have that any longer. But we want to get to the hospital. He said, "There's people coming down here with their alternative..." Oh, come on, Mr. Burgess and Mr., you know, I thought a lot more about you, Mr., um, whatever your name, Wilson. See, this is, they talk while you're talking and nobody gets, said anything to them at all. And I'm tired of it. They're supposed to listen to us. They don't know what they're doing. You don't know. If we don't tell you what we need in our neighborhood, you can only guess. And you can only take, "Well, I'll throw that here and I'll do this." But we tell you, I can't even come down here and talk without them talking over me. I'm tired of it. And I mean it. I am so tired. And I keep coming and they keep making me angry. And I come, before I come up here, I stand up and I, I say a prayer, "Lord, please guide my tongue." But when these, these rogues, because they're not council people, you're not a council person if you're talking with some, when the people come down to talk to you, you're not, you're not like acting like you should.
Thank you.
You should be impeached.
Any other speakers?
Hi, my name's Sarah Quinn. I live at 3137 Bergman Street over in Sheridan. Um, this is the first fall that I've lived in the neighborhood. And I just wanted to give a shout out to all the guys from Public Works who came and cleaned up all the leaves in our neighborhood. Um, they did a great job. And as I was driving down here this morning, they had a lane blocked off in, um, the Corliss Tunnel, cleaning up the inside of the Corliss Tunnel. So please thank the guys with the shovels for me. That's all.
Any other speakers? Any other speakers? Seeing none, that will move us on to our Standing Committee's agenda. Um, to begin, we need a motion to approve our invoices.
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Need a motion to approve the interim departmental transfers.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Transfers are approved. That takes us to our Public Safety Services Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Kraus. We have one deferred paper, Bill 629.
Bill 629, a resolution establishing the Pittsburgh Strong Communities Initiative and Advisory Committee.
A motion to approve, very brief discussion.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, I apologize. For some reason, my computer's telling me I don't have a camera and so I don't have my camera on and I apologize for that. Councilman Burgess, what are your wishes on the bill?
I'll follow your leadership. I've waited for amendments. I've not received any to date. I think the bill, as I've said...
I can't, I can't hear you, Councilman. I think you need to get closer to Mike.
I'll follow your leadership, but as I said before, for the second time, I've received no amendments or any conversation to amend it. I've worked with the mayor's office. They are supportive and I'm, I'm really ready to move it, but I'll, I'll follow your leadership.
So then, Councilman, a motion to hold two weeks?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill will be held two weeks. That moves us to our new papers, the first being Bill 995.
Bill 995, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of public safety on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements with United States Department of Justice for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of $79,327 for funding technology projects.
A motion to approve, brief discussion, please.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, I have no questions regarding this. It is the receipt of, uh, funds from the DOJ. There is no local match. I'm happy to support, ask members to support, but I do know that our Public Safety Director is on if, uh, members do have questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
No, but I do want to say our Public Safety Director's here.
He is.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussions, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 996.
Bill 996, a resolution authorizing the mayor and director of public safety to enter on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh into a professional services agreement or agreements with St. Moritz Security Services, Inc. for security guard services. Compensation under the agreements shall be in an amount not to exceed $6,990,061 with annual not-to-exceed amounts as set forth below for each respective budget year, subject to the availability of the funds and annual council appropriations at rates in compliance with and subject to any applicable requirements, including but not limited to collective bargaining commitments in the city of Pittsburgh's service worker prevailing wage ordinance.
A motion to approve with discussion, please.
Second.
Thank you. Good morning, Director Schmidt.
Give us one, he's actually here with us. He's coming to the table, Councilman.
Yeah, thanks.
Good morning.
Hi, Director. How are you today?
I'm well. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. I appreciate you being here. Uh, and if you would, could you please, um, enlighten the council as to the, uh, means for this expenditure?
Yeah, so this is the, uh, the renewal of the contract for security services for the city-county building, um, as well as currently we have security guards at 200 Ross Street. Um, once 412 opens, we'll have security guards there. And then these are also the guards that provide, um, extra security at, uh, other city facilities as well as events as requested. Uh, so like 4th of July, they provide the winding and entrance security for that event. Um, the, we use them this year at the Sue Murray Pool as well as the Homewood Senior Center.
So, Director, uh, I, I don't see in front of me the, uh, the length of the contract that we're renewing here. Can you tell me how long, uh, this, this contract is in place for then, if council approves today?
Uh, this is five years, so it'll be in, through 2027.
So we're, we're talking about like a, a million two per year to provide this, uh, the security services?
Correct.
Okay. Is it about what we expended last time, Director? I'm just curious.
Um, it's slightly higher, but that's mainly due to, uh, union wage increases. All the security companies in the city are unionized under the same union. It's all one agreement, so they all, uh, follow similar, uh, costs.
Okay. Appreciate you being here, Director. Thank you, and I'm happy to support.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And, um, Director, I just, um, want to bring up, when you're talking about building security, we had a walkthrough one day and I, you were involved, Ricky Moody, um, our Sergeant-at-Arms, and I'm not sure, I know there's supposed to be a follow-up. And I'm just wondering, I know you've got a lot going on, but, um, if we make sure that, uh, that we, that we schedule another meeting because I want to make sure that, um, as we're going forward, that we have a clear, you know, clear understanding as to who's responsible for the mental health. Uh, we have people coming through here that are, that are seriously mentally ill. Uh, we've had, you know, our side of the hall, Ricky Moody has intervened a few times, but I know that you have a team of social workers on your side. So I, I think make sure that we get that, outline that and, and we have clear, uh, definitions and descriptions as to, um, who's going to respond to what. That's all.
Yeah, we'll follow up.
So please follow up on that. Thank you. And thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill?
Thank you. Uh, from what I gather, we share expenses in this building with the county. So is that contract just our portion or is that the, for the St. Moritz?
No, um, we pay the, the full bill for the St. Moritz security. Um, to my knowledge, the agreement is somewhere along the line at the end of the year. There are certain things the county pays for, certain things we pay for, and then...
Okay, so that's kind of...
My understanding is both sides kind of show what everybody pays for.
All ironed out behind the scenes, um, you know, as long as that final figure comes out, a split 50/50, because I believe that's the way the building is split, um, I'd be okay with that. So, okay, and I really just want to say, you know, um, our security, I think they're top-notch. I really do. To a T. Everybody down there does a great job. Um, I know them all personally by now and just wanted to compliment them. Thanks.
You, Councilman Wilson.
How many, uh, security guards do we have under this contract?
Charles showers, Public Safety. Um, no, I, we don't have a specific, uh, number of guards that were allotted. It, it depends on the needs of the shifts and the, uh, locations. Um, I would have to check our, um, invoices as to see exactly how that calculates out, but it's something along the lines of, I think, around a dozen a day for the city-county building, something like that. And, um, you know, as, um, we have a couple of 200 Ross and so on.
Yeah, it can vary. Like right now, we have a little more because of the gingerbread houses, um, the display, because we have additional people coming in the building after the normal business hours, that sort of thing. But for the most part, there are at least two guards at each entrance during the day, plus the supervisor and then also roaming guard that, that roams throughout the building, so.
And how do their benefits, I realize this is a, you know, let me stop myself, this is a resolution to authorize the mayor and your, and yourself to enter into this agreement with the union?
No, this is with St. Moritz. So St. Moritz is a private contractor.
And the employees here are...
Yeah, their employees are unionized.
How do their benefits line up with others, um, non-union employees here?
I would have to ask that.
Can, um, we be proactive and to make sure that they have similar benefits?
Yeah, we can talk through, uh, what that looks like. I know, um, like you said, they all, so all the, all the security companies in this, in the region kind of bargain together. And I know their contract just came up, so, um, they are all unionized under, I don't remember which union it is, but...
I believe it's SEIU.
Yeah.
Yes.
I guess I'm just looking at the numbers and, um, having worked on the, the new benefit for a loss of pregnancy that's added to the bereavement leave, uh, recently that that was, you know, we did calculations to see what the cost would be for that. And it would just be nice to see what the costs are to, not only to include that, but also to, you know, make sure that those workers are, have similar benefits as to, you know, other employees in this building.
We can, we can even set up a meeting with, uh, St. Moritz management.
Yeah, just my request.
Yeah.
You, Councilman Burgess.
So, um, this comes up every now and then, and I'll remind everyone of my opinion is not something I can do, but it's something I will at least vocalize. I think it is unfair that you have two buildings owned by governments and you have the same people doing the same work in both buildings. And they're made, they make maybe 50% more at one building than the other. This building, which is the city-county building, is right next door to the county, off the county building. The security guards at the county building are in the union with the, um, the guards at the, the, the correction guards at the jail. They do the exact same work as the off, as the people who work in this building. Exactly the same. There's no difference. They do exactly the same thing, yet their pay is astronomically different. And I just, I, I think that's inherently unfair to have one group of workers right next door, both working for governments, and this is the city-county building, so we share it with the county. And, and this is not, this is something inherited. But it's, it's for me, um, unfortunate and unfair for those off, those, those security guards who probably, where do they, where do they make an hour? What's, what's, what's their...
Uh, I believe it's, uh, around 18. I don't have an exact figure.
They're making, you know, 18 an hour. And I, I'm sure the guards across, right next door are probably making $30 an hour or, you know, some, some, huh?
I think 33.
They're making like, you know, 50% more than them. And they do exactly the same work. Besides the fact that most of the officers in this building are African-American. I won't, you know, we won't go down that road, but it's true. It's, it is inherently unfair. And it's not something I can fix, but it is, it is something I have noticed since my years here. And I just think it's not fair. And at some point one day, perhaps we should revisit that and, and employ the same union, the same officers. Unfortunately, the people here would lose their jobs, right? The people, no good deed goes unpunished.
Those are county employees.
Yeah, they're county employees, right? And this is the city-county building, right? We share it with the county. The people here should make exactly the same as the people next door who are doing the exact same job for the exact same people. You know, it, it, I just want to, every now and then I bring that up just to, you know, I'm, that's my belief. And I just wanted to lay it on the table. When this comes up every, well, it comes up every four or five years, I'll, I'll give the same little speech. All right, thank, thank you for this moment.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our Public Works Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Director. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Bill 1015.
Bill 1015, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to commit future-year capital funding for an award or awards to Macero Corporation, East West Manufacturing and Supply Company, Inc., Westmoreland Electric Services, LLC, and Wheels Mechanical Contracting and Supplier, Inc. for the build-out and construction at 412 Boulevard of the Allies. The additional funding needed beyond what has already been allocated is not to exceed $3,200,000.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
Okay, um, you know, I, I really don't have much to say about it. I supported the purchase of this building, uh, I don't know, four years ago, I guess, or so. It's a tangible thing, you know? Um, it's an asset. You know, anybody, I got a call, a couple of calls from some reporters talking about the $3 million we're putting into it. And I reminded them, you know, 200 Ross Street was, is falling to pieces. Should be condemned probably at this point. We needed to house these, you know, um, authorities in a proper place. Uh, I stand behind my decision to support it then. I stand behind this 3.2 million to go into it. Again, um, it's an asset. And if we priced that building today or assessed that building today, we probably didn't lose a dime, including this 3 million as far as worth. But, uh, so just my thoughts on it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Two in opposition, affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our new papers, Bill 985.
Bill 985, a resolution amending Resolution 250 of 2021, which authorized the mayor, the director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with Quedica for professional services relating to fleet telematics and snow route optimization by expanding the scope to include GPS, AVL installation, and maintenance for environmental service and by increasing the term and authorized not-to-exceed amount by $492,660 for a total cost not to exceed $2,626,208.
Motion to approve.
Second, brief discussion.
Question, Councilman?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much. Councilman Coghill, I'm not sure if anybody is here to actually speak to this, but
Yeah, Brandon's here.
I understand, I'm sorry?
Brandon's here.
Okay, great, good, thanks. Just a quick question, that's all.
We know the routine.
Good morning.
Good morning. Brandon Walton, Fleet Services Manager.
Thanks, Brandon. So this is just to install the GPS systems on environmental services vehicles?
This would purchase and install the devices for environmental services, as well as extend the contract an additional two years, and pay the monthly fee for the service.
For the DPW, I'm sorry, the, to pay the fees for the already-installed DPW trucks, or to pay for the services for the new installations in our environmental services vehicles?
Well, since we would be extending the two years, it would cover both the cost of the vehicles that already have the GPSs
Gotcha.
as well as the environmental services.
I was just under the impression that environmental services already had the GPS in it, and that was the only reason why I really wanted to, to ask you, but I'm happy to support and hope members will as well. Thanks, Brandon.
Thank you. Councilman Schlossberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Brandon, for, for being here today. So this is, this relates to, in part, the snow route optimization?
The contract extension does.
Okay, and so how much is this related to what the public can see in the real-time snow, snow plowing tracker?
So this, this contract covers that as well?
Okay.
The public site.
My observation has been that in the very beginning of each snowy season, the snowplow tracker works wonderfully, and then as the season goes, there are glitches, you know, halfway through the snow season, you just, the winter season, you just, you can't trust it anymore. Is there anything that we've done to improve upon this contract? Within the contract, prove upon what we have already in the technology to make sure that it is reliable, and that the public can trust that when they go to the snowplow tracker, it's, it's accurate, and it's not data from, you know, 10 days ago?
So I know that Public Works has been working really closely with Quedica to update the route optimization, as well as make some improvements to that site. Some other things we're doing, we have kind of updated some of the equipment that we were using, some of our older equipment just wasn't very compatible with it, so as the vehicles were out on the road, they would overheat the system and it's not working.
Okay, okay. So with the purchase of the new vehicles and procurement of new vehicles that we know we really put a lot of energy into last winter and this year, that should, you think that should help?
Yes, as well as we've retrofitted some, some older vehicles with some newer equipment as well.
Okay, that's great to hear. That's great to hear. I, I want to be able to have our offices and also the public be able to rely, find reliable information online when they seek it, so that's helpful. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Coghill.
Yes, thank you for being here, Brandon. I think I stressed this to you, as well as Director Hornstein. I'm not a fan of the tracker. It's great that people can sit there in pajamas and see where the salt truck is, don't get me wrong, you know, what a convenience. However, it doesn't work for me. My trucks are traveling outside of my district in order just to get salt, and what people see, the minute they see on that screen, there's not the, zero trucks in Carrick, zero trucks in Overbrook, they call my office. So how much of the portion of this money goes towards the tracker? Do you know that figure?
I don't know exactly. I'd have to get back to you. It's, it's a smaller portion than it's
I hope so.
than the monthly coverage and the installation fees, but there is a dollar amount that's assigned directly to it.
But we're, we're asking for 496, is that what it was here?
Total 2,900.
Yeah. A total 2,626. I'd love to get that number before I vote on this in final. And I guess, I'll have to talk to administration. I guess they're married to the idea of the tracker, and, you know, I don't know how other parts of the city react to it, but it does nothing but cause problems for me. And if we're willing to have a hotline for that, that I don't have to answer those calls, I'm gladly supportive, but, but the tracker for me is, you know, a convenience that I don't feel people necessarily need. In fact, it causes more problems. It gives them a reason to scream at me during a bad snowstorm. Okay, I just wanted to add my two cents. If I can get the figure for what the actual tracker of that 2.6 million is, how much of that is going into, whether it's installation, the actual system itself, the software, you know, what I'm looking for, you know what I'm looking for?
That to you, Councilman.
Thank you. That's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you for being here, Brandon. I think all members have the same general thing on their minds with the snowplow trackers. So route optimization is great, right? We think. There were some adjustments, I think, with workforce issues and, like you said, you know, equipment issues, but, you know, kind of getting a sense of internally for managing a weather event and managing a snow event of where the trucks are, where the trucks are going. I can imagine being in kind of, you know, the, in charge of the snow clearing and, and wanting to know where, kind of a broad vision of where the trucks are, but if, if you're, if it's in DPW or dummy, you can kind of get in touch with the driver, right, and find out whether what you see on the screen is accurate or not. When we're putting it out to the publicly facing platform, I, I think we're all relatively skeptical of like, how accurate is what we're putting out there? And so because it's glitchy, because there are sometimes delays, but if you're sitting at home, you don't know whether the information that it's communicating to you is currently accurate or is currently not at all accurate. And so it's, I, I don't, I think there was more promise than actual delivery, and like, the concept is really neat, and, and it's really, like, if you kind of suspend disbelief and be like, yeah, I'm going to pretend that this is all really accurate data, like, it's really cool to be able to look and see on the screen and see the little blips moving, and see which kinds of trucks are where, and, but when, you know, we know for, in reality, that it, it may not actually be accurate, then we're just kind of putting out possibly misinformation. And we all understand, I think now, that a lot of digital information has delays, has glitches, and so I was really excited about it in its first year, but as we see that it may be not, I, I'm not sure it's worth the money. I think it might be worth the money, again, internally for our managing the actual snow events, but I'm not sure if there's a marginal cost that is substantial for putting, for managing and trying to make accurate and make perfect, some imperfect technology for it to being publicly facing. I, I concur. I think we should revisit that part. And so if we can see, if it's, if it's actually just embedded in the contract and it's just a few pennies extra, or maybe we'll all try to get to that perfect information transfer to, to be publicly facing, but if it's a substantial part of this contract, we want, I think I want to know, because I, I have doubts that it's worth the time and effort, and even at the department level, the effort to make the publicly facing information actually dependable. I'm just not sure the technology's there, so, thank you. That's all I, that wasn't a question. I didn't have any questions for you, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Just pretty much same thing the two of you said, but for me, it's more of a personal thing. I think that we continue to expect so much from our DPW employees, and we're not giving them all the equipment that they need. You know, I don't know how many vehicles we, we are purchasing this year total, but I feel like for us, what they always want from us is for us to trust that they know how to do their job. And I think instead, they feel micromanaged by this process, and it's not changing anything, because it was down several times during the snowstorm last year and the year before, the system was down. People start to rely on it and think that that's going to be a good tool, and then it's not working when the time that they need it the most. So, and for me, it's, it's more how the employees feel. There's like, for instance, there's one where the GPS system tells them to take them one, one, one way, and the best way that they know to do it, because after 30 years' experience, is to not go that way, but to back it up and do it a different way, and do it backwards. So I think we're not including their institutional knowledge, and, you know, sometimes we think because they're not in behind a desk, that they don't know what they're talking about. Sometimes, we need to go out in the trucks and find out exactly what they're doing, and I actually did that once before, and I'll never question the work and job that they do again, because it is dangerous. And so I'm just going to vote no today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Second round, Councilman Coghill?
Thank you. Just to add what Councilwoman Gross said, I, my, my vehicles travel outside the district, and then they don't show up on the tracker, for starters, but she mentioned another very important point, the glitches. If it's not going more than 5 mile an hour, if it's backing up a hill and, you know, salting the hill in that fashion, you know, so many, so many things with it that I, I have issues with. And as a member with you on the Equipment Leasing Authority Board, I would much rather buy two new trucks if, depending on what the, you know, what that dollar amount is for the tracking system when it comes back. So I just wanted to follow up on their two comments. Thanks. Unless you care to comment on that.
The bulk of the cost in the contract is for the telematics, the monthly recurring fees for the, the internet, the cellular service, and the cost of the devices. I'd have to double-check. I'm pretty sure it's, it's somewhere around $55,000 is the cost of the
55, that's, that's
per year, I believe.
One new truck, at least.
I have to double-check. It's, it's in the, in the contract amendment that, that was sent for this resolution.
Right. So
Didn't bring it up.
Let me ask you this, Brandon. If we were to hold this for a week until we got some figures back, does that put you behind the eight ball?
Just a little bit. Being that the contract ends soon, we'll have trouble paying invoices. We'll have to wait until it, until the amendment goes through.
Well, you know, I'm not going to hold right now, but I'm going to abstain, and I'd like to get those figures before Tuesday on, you know, what the tracker portion is, whether it's 55,000, $80,000. I have a hard time supporting that, so. Okay, that's it. Thanks.
I can get those figures back to you today.
Please.
Yeah.
Thanks, Brandon. I just have a question about this tracker. So when the tracker's working, and say I go on the tracker, and I see that the truck went down, you know, I don't know, Grant Street here, is that accurate?
I know that there were a lot of glitches with whether the truck actually plowed or salted on the route that, that the tracker was saying it was. The GPS information, did the truck actually drive down that road, is accurate. The GPS information
It either plowed or salted.
And I know there was some, some issues there. I'm, I'm not sure how much of the information
But like, issues, you mean like, one or twice?
So some of the older
There's like, ongoing season issue.
Well, some of the older equipment, the tornadoes that we were running on some of our older trucks, the system wasn't quite as compatible with it as we had originally hoped. There's an electric motor on them that overheated, so we've, we've since moved to hydraulic-driven systems, and we've also upgraded the majority of the old tornado systems to a newer hydraulic system. So the hope is that we'll get much better, much more accurate information, but also much more reliable equipment by going to the hydraulic system.
Generally, if someone lives on a hilltop, and they look on there, and they see that the truck went down the hill, or up the hill, they need to get home, that's mostly accurate.
Mostly accurate, correct.
So that might help someone.
It, it should. I mean, they, it, it should tell them that the truck did go down their hill, and more than likely, if it went down their hill, it was doing its job. But that's just an assumption, I guess.
Seems like a decent type of technology. Thanks.
Thank you. Madam President?
I just want to thank you for your work, because I, I didn't mention that before, but anytime it comes something with fleet, everybody's like, talk to Brandon, because you're such an expert, so thank you for your work as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, opposed.
One, one opposed, any abstentions?
Same.
Two abstentions. One, two, three, four, affirmative recommendation. Thank you. Takes us to Bill 986.
Bill 986, a resolution further amending Resolution Number 840 of 2019, effective December 23, 2019, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Liberty Avenue by $275,000."
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 987.
Bill 987, a resolution further amending Resolution Number 647 of 2020, effective December 23, 2020, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Liberty Avenue by $92,993.21."
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 988.
Bill 988, a resolution taking, appropriating, and condemning by the City of Pittsburgh for public roadway purposes, certain property in the 5th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, owned by Brian and Donna Albert, located along Andover Terrace, and authorizing the payment of just compensation and necessary and incidental acquisition costs related thereto, and further authorizing, in lieu of eminent domain, the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into certain temporary and permanent easements on this property and other certain separate properties necessary for completion of temporary support work for land stabilization around Andover Terrace.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will abstain, as I live on the street. Affirmative recommendation. Bill 989.
Bill 989, a resolution authorizing for an agreement with CSXT for engineering work on the Fraser Street Swinburne Bridge Replacement Project, and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $20,020.
Motion to hold for one week.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I wanted discussion. I was hoping for discussion.
He wants, he wants
Well, I guess we'll just take it offline. I, I'm just curious for the reason for the hold.
It was requested by the incoming member to be able to speak with the administration.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, the question by whom?
The incoming member in order to be able to speak with the administration.
I shared that as well.
Okay, thank you. So it did receive an affirmative recommendation, so that will take us of a one-week hold. So that takes us to Bill 990.
Bill 990, a resolution providing for an agreement with CSXT for engineering work on the Charles Anderson Bridge Replacement Project, and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $15,180.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. I think that's the end of Fraser Street. Bill 991.
Bill 991, a resolution providing for a reimbursement and maintenance agreement or agreements with Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for local costs to upgrade pedestrian facilities at SR19A84 as part of a larger project undertaken by PennDOT to improve SR19A84 by roadway altercation, altercations or resurfacing at a cost of the City of Pittsburgh not to exceed $27,600.
Motion to approve.
Second. Question? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 992.
Bill 992, a resolution amending Resolution 924 of 2021, entitled, "Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Pittsburgh Pedestrian Wayfinder Project, Providing for the Payment of the Cost thereof not to exceed $1,400,000." Providing for the Payment of the Cost thereof not to exceed $1,400,000. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at a cost of $0. Future resolutions will authorize the project's specific service agreements to increase the not-to-exceed amount of $1,500,000, an increase of $100,000, and authorize entering into a reimbursement agreement or agreements with Pennsylvania Department of Transportation."
Second.
Discussion? Discussion, Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, appreciate it. It just, is this the just downtown only?
It goes over to the north side as well.
So the footprint is kind of like business district, but not Golden Triangle? It's like, doesn't do the lower strip district? So it's downtown, and then what portion of the north side?
Correctly. It'll go as far up to, I believe, the Mexican border.
Wow. So north shore, but then beyond federal?
I don't believe beyond. I don't believe beyond federal. But there's a way to get you to.
Solve all of the elegant commons.
To direct you into Randy Land, City of Asylum. Thank you. Papi, Mattress Factory.
The destination.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Andy Warhol.
I never understood it that way.
Yeah.
I've been supportive of directing visitors to city destinations for more than 20 years. When I was at the Greater Pittsburgh Arts Alliance, I was trying to say like, it's act, all of our destinations are spread out all across the city in other neighborhoods, different neighborhoods. It's really hard to know. You know, the internet helps a lot these days. But, so that's wonderful news. Thank you.
Especially if you're walking.
No plot tracker. Tourist tracker.
Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 993.
Bill 993. A resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with multiple phases of the Liberty Avenue Highway Safety Improvement Program, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $7,405,556, an increase of $800,000 for the final design phase from the previously executed agreement. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at a cost to the City of Pittsburgh of $4,500, an increase of $2,500 from the previous executed agreement. Future resolutions will authorize the project's specific service agreements.
Motion to have a brief discussion, please.
Second.
Okay, I'll defer to Councilwoman Gross on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I got, this is the part of Liberty Avenue that goes through the strip district, and it's a substantial project with PennDOT. But it's transferring, right, very soon from District Seven to District One. And I don't think we've had an update for a little while. So if you wouldn't mind, I know that the director's in the room. Dr. Lucas, would you join us for just a brief update? This is a nearly million-dollar overrun. There are two bills in front of council that we voted already to approve, 987 on the last page. And then this is 993, which is an increase of $800,000. But, so could you kind of describe? It says that the City of Pittsburgh, if I'm reading this correctly, is only, the City of Pittsburgh portion of the amount is only from $4,500. So if you could introduce yourself for the public and kind of clarify what we're seeing.
Absolutely. So Kim Lucas, Director for the City's Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. Councilmember, you're correct that 986, 987, and 993 are all related to the same project, which is the Liberty Avenue H SIP, which is a safety improvement project along Liberty Avenue, which was one of our highest corridors of safety concern in the city, which is why it's the focus of this project. The project overall includes traffic signal improvements, safety improvements for both pedestrians and vehicles, so motorists, improved transit access, and safer pedestrian crossings. So the first two amendments that you all have voted to approve on had to do with a change in the match amount from 80% to 90%. So it's an action, it's an accounting action for the reimbursable amount on our tip account. So the total project budget not necessarily has changed. It's that the match amount has been modified. And so we have to update our internal accounting accounts to reflect that. This final item has to do with adding the final design portion. So we're moving into final design of the reimbursement agreement to our accounting system, which is JD Edwards, so that we can begin that. And there will be separate forthcoming legislation for that final design.
And just to keep people updated. It's been odd, because it started before COVID, and we've been in COVID. And so public process has been a little different. There are quite a few pedestrian safety concerns along that corridor. Of course, we've got institutions like the ballet. We've got places that have parking lots across. People are trying to get off of bus lines and get into the shopping district in the strip. So can you just maybe summarize like what the public process has been? And if there's, since you're in design phase, is that public process closed? Or where can the public get more information about the project?
So the public can go to EngagePGH, where we have a project website, and it will share with you project details, so specific locations for traffic signal upgrades, pedestrian safety improvements, and what those consist of. And so that is our portal, where 24 hours a day, seven days a week, members of the public can provide feedback, and as well as find contact information for project staffing. I know we've had public meetings pertaining to this. If it's money that's coming through PennDOT, then we are required to participate in certain processes. But I can get clarity on when those were and if we have any upcoming ones as well.
Very appreciate that. I'll just open the floor to questions, and that's all I have. I appreciate it, Director.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee, chaired by Councilman Wilson. Our first bill is Bill 270. Do you want us to read Bill 465 as well? Okay.
Bill 270. An ordinance of supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VII, Business Licensing, Article VII, Business Licenses, by creating a new Chapter 768, Short Term Rentals. And Bill 465. An ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title V, Traffic, Article VII, Parking, Chapter 549, Residential Parking Permit Program, Section 549.08, Visitor Permits, Non-Resident Permits, so as to relate the issuance of residential parking permits for short-term rentals to the issuance of licenses by the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections, authorizing the operation of short-term rentals in the City of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve discussion.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I asked both bills be read, because that's, you know, 465 would have language that would be changed due to 270, whenever 270 is passed. In relation to 270, I'll be making a motion to hold for two weeks. And I just want to make a comment about the hold and the work that's been done, the work that we want to see done, and the increase in safety that we want to see that would come out of this bill. It doesn't, it doesn't fall. We have every intention to make it, to pass this bill. I think the reality is that the conversation started, this conversation started prior to that incident. There were members working on that bill. There's a lot of interest in what can be done here. And there is some sensitivity around it that we, the council president and I have been meeting with the law department. And it's been a productive meeting, the law department and the administration, just recently, as of last week. So I think it's at the forefront of, you know, the sponsors of the bill to get it done. And I believe that council is in support of getting this done as well. And, you know, for that, I'm gonna make, you mean make the motion now?
Yeah, make the motion.
Motion to hold for two weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will be held, both bills will be held two weeks.
Thank you, Councilman. No, I just want to thank you and Mohammed.
That takes us to Bill 819.
Bill 819. An ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning, Article IV, Planning Districts, Chapter 910, Downtown Districts, to update review and approval processes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our new papers, Bill 999.
Bill 999. A resolution further amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, effective December 27, 2021, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2022-2027 Capital Improvement Program, so as to identify specific public service grant projects in council districts One and District Seven, and authorize a subsequent agreement or agreements for operation administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents of the City of Pittsburgh."
Motion to approve discussion.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have an amendment to the bill. It's gonna be, what's the term? Amended. Yeah, it's a technical amendment, but you can see it on the third page. This is in relation to, there's one edit. And it's just simply having the project name or the entity that received the funds with its complete name. So Troy Hill would now be Troy Hill Citizens, Inc.
Make the formal motion to amend?
Motion to amend.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill has been amended. Any discussion on the bill as amended? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Bill 1,000.
Bill 1,000. A resolution providing for an agreement or agreements with the Urban League of Pittsburgh for the implementation, administration of the housing counseling program and related costs in the amount not to exceed $100,000.
Which committee is it?
So this is, we're talking about 860? This is, I'm sorry.
No, we're on Bill 1,000.
Uh, Councilman.
Uh, motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1,001.
Bill 1,001. A resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of city planning to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contracts with WSP USA, Inc., for services related to an update to the Manchester National Registered District that will add additional historic contacts, including civil rights history, to buildings within the district at a cost not to exceed $35,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Affirmative. Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Bill 1,002.
Bill 1,002. A resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of permits, licenses, and inspections to enter into an amended agreement or agreements with DAPALonia for emergency geotechnical services to assist in response to land movement and landslide incidents. The agreements will add another year to the existing agreement term and shall be at an overall cost not to exceed $1,500,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Councilwoman Gross?
Yes, is there any specific projects, or is this just the on-call agreement? So, yeah, if anyone could answer that, because God knows, we all have landslides, and we all need these geotech services. And we have discussed as a body adding this capacity in the city's organizational chart internally, instead of having to constantly subcontract for it. So, Director, I see you there. Hello, please come to the table digitally.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman, for the question. Yeah, so this contract with DAPALonia, which is a local small business consulting firm, they provide on-call emergency assessments, survey, consultation, and expert court testimony for landslide cases that PLI is bringing against owners through the code enforcement process. And part of that work sometimes requires necessary site and soil assessments that are not performed by inspectors, are not performed by plan reviewers, and require outside expertise at this time.
Okay, so this contract, they were spending $1.5 million on. Is, wait, it's $1.5 million for how many years?
So I believe the previous agreement started in 2018 is now expiring. So that was a three-year agreement. In the previous agreement, we spent just under $180,000, so much, much less than $1.5 million. That original amount was an estimate back in 2018, after the 2017 year of landslides. So we had a ton of landslides. We weren't sure how much it would cost to perform some of the necessary site and soil assessments. And so we're really asking council to reauthorize the encumbered amount for this work.
Right. So first, I'm gonna say, it's really hard for the public to, we need better numbers in the titles of the bills, and I've been saying this on various bills and various committees, right? We shouldn't have to guess. I used to, if you look back at videos years ago, always sit with like the 300-page paper packet in front of me for this reason. We don't, we're trying not to print that much paper, but it just, you know, for the OMB and the law department and everything, please put more of the financial information in the title of the bill. The dollar amounts are meaningless unless we know the terms or, you know, the cost of a runs or what we're being, what we're mending or over how many years. So having said that, little rant, back to this bill, which is that, gosh, we need geotech services to also prevent landslides and our own roads falling off hills. And this contract does not do that at all. You're saying that this one is just restricted for PLI to take legal action against individual homeowners, and that this $1.5 million kind of on-call contract would be to provide court testimony against owners.
So it's court test, or expert witness testimony of landslide conditions, site and soil assessments as required, consultation. And then through the permitting process for those who have landslide conditions on their property, they submit construction drawings, and DAPALonia assists with that review as well. So to your first question, correct. This is geared towards PLI's work to ensure remediation of landslide conditions on private properties and does not include other departments.
Right, so it's not a question for you, but it's a question, I think, for councils. Do we have an on-call contract for DAPALonia for DOMI, which is where we have housed landslide remediation? I sometimes question that, because it's not always about roads. But, or the right-of-way, which is what we've tasked DOMI with, in my mind. And sometimes I wonder if it should be in DPW, which is about other kinds of works that the publics, does, public works. So I know, I'm not gonna ask you to answer that question, but I'm just gonna kind of, let's follow up as councilmembers and find out whether we have the adequate geotechnical services at our disposal as the city. Again, externally, if we're not going to put it in the organizational chart ourselves to have an engineering department and to have hydrologists, technical expertise, and, you know, this kind of human resources in our organizational chart, which it looks like we're, more and more, we actually need it in-house, instead of spending how much money out of house. So I won't keep you at the table any longer, Director, but I would think it's definitely a shame and something that we need to correct if we are not resourcing our budget to prevent landslides or to remediate our own landslides. And, but we are putting $1.5 million into bringing suit against individual property owners. So I won't oppose this today, but I do want to hear that we are doing better about landslides in general.[1752.78] about landslides in general, so thank you for your time.
Uh, Councilwoman Coghill?
Now you raised questions with me. Okay, so, um, so, so let me just make sure I clarify this with you, Director, and listening to you and Councilwoman Gross go back and forth. This $1.5 million is to, I don't wanna say go after property owners, but it's not for somebody to come out and assess, oh, what's going on here. It's really to, for instance, okay? Let me give you a, for instance, I don't know if you were the Director at the time or not. In Brookline, I had a hillside falling down. Uh, modest living these people make, um, they needed to get a geological survey for, I think they got a price of $23,000, right? They didn't have the money. Um, but we did send people out there and say, whoa, look, you need to get this done, right? And I understand, there's a safety hazard there and everything else, but, uh... So this money is to fight deliberating with homeowners, and it's not to send people to the scene saying, oh, look, we, you know, to assess it. It's really just to help aid us in getting the homeowners to, yeah, so, to court, like as Councilwoman said, so, is that right?
It is used for the code enforcement process, that's correct. Uh, it is also used for the remediation and abatement process, right? So after, uh, we issue citations for landslide conditions with this expertise, uh, the owners are also submitting documentation that includes construction drawings with, uh, technical aspects that are reviewed through this contract. So it's both for code enforcement and for remediation. Um, should we get to court, um, and, you know, usually when we're dealing with landslide cases, we're working closely with the owners, uh, on continuances and time, because it takes a lot of time to remediate a landslide, um, to provide expert witness testimony when necessary. There are some onsite assessments that are also made through this contract, which are necessary for our understanding of soil conditions and other technical aspects that we're reviewing for to ensure the safe remediation of private land. In addition, uh, if we are looking at making an assessment of condemnation of an occupied structure due to a landslide condition, we rely on this contract for the expertise prior to making that call.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's all for me.
Wilson?
Uh, thanks, Director. So, I understand the concern, but isn't this a public safety effort that we're doing here? Because sometimes homeowners wanna get back in their house, but the house is unsafe. So they go to the, they go to court, they wanna get back in their house. You know, we try and make every effort to, you know, guide them to that, but we can't let someone back in their house if, if the, the hillside's unstable, right?
Correct. It is part of that review to ensure that, uh, work will be performed to approve drawings, to ensure stability, uh, and that if, if there was a condemnation, that folks can, uh, appropriately reoccupy when the, the work is completed.
Yeah, 'cause I, I don't want the, I mean, we're not going after... Like, are we suing homeowners? Like, I just, I don't want people to get the idea that we're... Okay, we're suing homeowners if they wanna get back in their house.
I think, yeah, we're talking about the, the standard code enforcement process, right? So PLI is issuing citations, we're saying, please abate this violation within a, a certain timeframe. Um, at the third citation per standard, we are moving forward through a court process. But again, we're working with owners to get to remediation. That's our, our shared goal is safe, um, safe and habitable living spaces.
Okay, so let's just go through the citation process. All right, all right, thanks.
Thank you, Madam President.
So I just, I hear what you're saying about keeping people out of the homes, but I think it's, it's ironic that we have people squatting in vacant homes that have been condemned across the entire city of Pittsburgh, and yet the process to do anything to keep people safe has been very slow at best. And I can point to many homes in, in my district, and as you know, the, where 911 had to respond, first responders had to come in because people, um, have duplexes and were using, um, portable heaters, which caused the people next door to have carbon monoxide poisoning. So, I, you know, when you're talking about safety, that's, to me, is one of the biggest things, and spending this kind of money on that, um, is, one, it's concerning to me. But the other thing that's concerning to me is that with this council, last week, just said that we want directors to be here in person. And, um, I'm not sure if there's something going on, Director, but I really, we said we were gonna hold bills if people, if directors don't show up. Um, so I, I personally am okay withholding this bill for a week and having a broader conversation about what we're doing with vacant properties across the city of Pittsburgh and condemned properties, um, and it's, including those where people were squatting.
Sure. I appreciate that, Councilwoman, if I could respond. Uh, we are packing up at 200 Ross Street. We are moving to 100 Ross, uh, and so we have boxes all over the place, but, uh, happy to make an effort to make sure that, uh, make it to council.
Yeah, I appreciate that. We have no boxes here. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Second round, um, second round, Councilwoman Coghill?
Okay, now, I just, I just wanted to add one thing, and I talked to you about this in the past, Director. I don't know, I don't under, I'm not an attorney. I don't understand the legalities behind when we do get to the point and we use this money to inform the property owners that they need to, number one, go out and get the geological study, which most of them can't afford. Um, but the disturbing part of that document for me was, and, and I had people in tears, um, over this language, and we talked about this, was if you don't, you will be fined $1,000 a day. You know, I mean, it's like the last thing. We're telling them, we have, they have to gotta get a $20,000 geological study, and at the same time, we're saying, if you don't, you're gonna get fined $1,000 a day. All they have is their house to leave to their children or their heirs, you know? We need to lose that language. Um, I understand you, we have to, there has to be a stick with this, you know, in order to get people to comply, but this is making people distraught. Um, so, uh, I wish we could lose that language, especially on something like this when people don't have the means to really just go out and get this done tomorrow. Um, I don't know if we have to talk to the legal department. Uh, uh, may not be in your purview, but, um, if you have any thoughts on it, please share.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Councilman. So the, the language has been changed over time, and it doesn't say, we are going to fine you. It says that we're gonna work together towards remediation and abatement. Um, so I'm happy to share the updated standard violation notice, letter with you, so that you can review as well. Um, but again, the, the fines are reserved for folks that are bad actors. That's not what's happening in landslide conditions, right? Those are, uh, acts of God that are, uh, unfortunate, um, that we wanna help people, um, get through a process to make sure that there are safe abatement, so they can occupy safely. Um, so, you know, you, you've brought up that comment before. Um, I believe that we've addressed it with some amended language, and again, happy to share that language with you.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. Um, you know, and if I recall from before, it was, you're right, it wasn't, it was never, we will be fining you $1,000 a day. It was, we have the ability to fine you up to $1,000 a day. Um, has that changed then? Is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, so to your, to your point, it's never said, we will. It says, we can, um, but even, uh, we've gone even further to say, we wanna work with you to get to abatement in the violation letter, so that, that is first and foremost. Uh, but we do have an obligation to let people know what, uh, the consequences can be to, um, uh, not seeking abatement or remediation.
Sure. Uh, you know, I didn't realize that we had changed any language at all. I would love to see, you know, the difference. And, um, yeah, again, I understand there's gotta be consequences for people who do not comply, but, um, you know, this, again, puts people in a different stratosphere, and they think, oh, my goodness, $1,000 a day over a month? Well, no, yeah, okay. All right, that's great. Um, I, I thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I have a comment?
Yes, Councilman Gross.
Thank you. Thanks, uh, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Director. How are you? Uh, I, I have a question for you that you may not be able to answer, but I'm just curious. It, it seems as the discussion is going around, it, it, there seems to be the understanding that these are largely residential properties. Uh, but I'm curious to know how many of them are investment properties that may be experiencing this, that they're not actual residents of the city. They've purchased investment property, uh, which they're not managing. Do you have a sense of how that breakdown might happen? You know, the number-wise as to resident versus investor?
Yeah, I don't have that number, um, available to me now, but what we could look at are, uh, landslide violations that are issued, and then the ownership, um, to have a better understanding of that data and provide that to council.
Yeah, and I, and I can understand and appreciate council's, uh, um, uh, careful consideration of people that truly, you know, are single homeowners, they live in the city, they're having landslide issues, and, and again, as you said, we've revamped language that says, we're not here to hurt, we're here to help. We wanna work collectively with you. Uh, but I'm not necessarily interested in, in, uh, um, in, uh, I don't know the word I wanna use, uh, in taking into consideration people that have come in, invested in property, and then just neglect the property, of which the third council district has a ton of. So in that regard, I, I, today, I personally won't be voting to support a hold. I would, I would prefer to vote the bill through. Of course, we'll bow to the, uh, the will of a member's entirety, but, uh, I won't vote to, uh, support a hold today. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing...
Motion to hold for one week.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will be held...
Aye, or no, no, I mean...
One in opposition.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The bill will be held one week. Councilman Burgess?
So, I think that, you know, now that we were held out, I've, I've said last week, my view, that, you know, we should talk to directors in person. I don't like talking on screens, and so it will pretty much be my preference to hold bills when the directors are not in the room. And I will vote for holds almost, for, I will vote for holds if they're not in the room, because I just think that, that, um, I know everyone is busy, but, you know, this is, this is how we perform our tasks, right? This is our job. And one of the reasons that we have the power to confirm directors is to have this level of access, and that access has to be public. And for me, I, I just ca, I'm just old, and so I, I can't do it remotely. I, I need to have them in the room for me to be able to do my job.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend, and I just wanna add to that is that, um, after you made those comments last week, I wanna make sure that we're holding directors to that, but we do understand that there are times when people are ill or things that they have to, and we appreciate that when people can still participate via Zoom when there's an illness or something going on. But we want at least that respect that you at least notify council in advance so that, or, or the day of, so that we know, um, you know, what to expect. But I also wanna say, after you made those comments, I received a lot of phone calls and emails from constituents and people across the city of Pittsburgh who said they have a very difficult time hearing us on these mics, let alone via Zoom. So they said it's challenging to them. So I don't wanna, and I know that, um, you know, in this day and age, I'm okay with people working part-time from home. I'm okay with people doing Zoom. I'm okay with all that, but I think the public is saying that they're having a difficult time hearing. So we need to be respectful and mindful of that as well.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to our Urban Recreation Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Burgess. We have one deferred paper, Bill 860.
Bill 860, a resolution instructing the Director of Parks and Recreation and the Department of Public Works to amend the rules and regulations for sports field permits to provide priority use to athletic organizations comprised of City of Pittsburgh residents.
Um, motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
I defer to Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Burgess. This, uh, this bill, uh, appreciate, I really appreciate the council president's efforts to get this on the table, and we're working together. I think we got a, uh, you know, a good bill that we're putting together, good meaning about it. We're gonna send, uh, uh, an amended version to the, to the directors who are working with the department. Um, so looking forward to that discussion, and hopefully we'll come back to council and, and send around the, uh, the amended version soon. So, motion to hold?
And I just, I just wanna say, real, real briefly, I just wanna thank you and Mohammed, uh, for working. Mohammed in your office has been amazing helping us with several bills, so I just wanna thank him for this work, and thank you for making him available to work with us. And it's been, it's been good. I think we all have the same idea that we wanna make sure that our athletic associations across the city of Pittsburgh that provide, you know, our kids, youth areas, you know, children with recreational opportunities, um, nearly 10,000 kids in the city of Pittsburgh play with our organizations. And so, um, that we're gonna make sure that our kids are on those fields too. And so I just wanna say that we respect what they do in the associations, and this is gonna be a strong message that we, City Council supports them and their efforts. So I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you. Councilman?
Uh, motion to hold for one week.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will be held one week. That takes us, that takes us to our new paper, Bill 984.
Bill 984, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of the DHS OEE Keys Service Corps in an amount not to exceed $12,000 and zero cents for the payment of the 2021 AmeriCorps Keys Summer Program, which provides funding for hosting nine youth to participate in the Department of Parks and Recreation Educational Programming Jobs Training for the summer. The AmeriCorps members who participated in this program worked alongside city park staff to support the multi-site summer camps in providing for the payment thereof.
Questions approved?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Innovation, Performance, Asset Management Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Schlossberger. First new paper is Bill 997.
Bill 997, a resolution amending Resolution 644 of 2020, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to adopt an existing government contract and enter into any related agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Carisoft Technology Corp. to provide Google Cloud subscription services and add Google Assured Workloads to provide secure storage for sensitive data on the city's cloud platform at an amount not to exceed $4,282,824.38.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Um, we, I, I wanted to clarify that this particular bill, um, will actually result in, the impact will be an additional 240, 240,000 for this year, with a grand total impact to, you know, for not, not to exceed $4.2 million. But wanted to clarify that the actual impact will be $240,000. And I would like to echo what Councilwoman Gross has pointed out in the past, that, um, in the future, it would be helpful if we could see that in the title of the bill rather than in the, in the body of the bill. Um, because the full impact doesn't tell the whole story of what we're actually voting on today, which is a, a smaller increase, um, for 2023's line item. But, um, wanted to clarify that and happy to, to allow my colleagues to ask any questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman, uh, Gross?
Appreciate that, Councilwoman, and I wrote down 240,000, but I kind of only just caught what you were saying. Is the, um, change order 240,000 for 2023? And so the full amount of twen, for 2023 is going from, I don't know, we don't know the, how long the $4 million contract is, so, go, go ahead.
You can answer. Mr. Chair, interrogatory?
Yes.
Um, so for 2023, the original not to exceed was 1,388,000, or, $1,388,219.98, to, moving to 1.6.
1.6, yeah. Okay, so like 1.3 and a half-ish to like 1.6-ish? So, um, but that's, that really important information for myself and for the public. I really appreciate that, because we, again, the public can't see this in the title, and it is a little cumbersome in our current, you know, legislative database to click all the way through to get to those numbers. Um, and so, you know, just remember, so we're paying, you know, now, we'll be paying 1.6 million for Google Cloud subscription service for storage, and only for sensitive data. On top of, you know, I'm gonna forget, but I'm, I'm assuming it's at least $1 million a year for Microsoft Outlook, kind of things that we all work on, a year for Microsoft Outlook, kind of things that we all work on, that we have our email on, and we have our storage files in OneDrive on. So, you know, I'll vote to support today, because God knows, we can't just stop what we're doing, but I think we should kind of reassess. You know, it's my almost ninth year on council, like I'm finishing nine years on council, and been saying periodically, like, this movement to being smart and having intelligent systems and moving digitally and moving to the cloud is different than what we used to be doing. But just like, you know, your at-home landline phone service was very limited compared to what you can do now on your basically mini computer, but boy, oh, boy, it was a hell of a lot cheaper per month than you're carrying around your, you know, mini computer in your hand as a telephone, too. So similarly, I've questioned...I think Director Norman is doing a fantastic job, and we've talked about this in different budget years, in kind of reining in and evaluating these software subscription services that we pay a lot of money to, to evaluate whether we really need the services that we're paying for, and which ones do we need, match to which department? Because, you know, salespeople are salespeople, and they'll try to sell our departments, you know, things that they're not necessarily ever going to use, or...and certainly don't have the in-house human capital to know how to use. And we've certainly seen many bumps in the road, even since before I was on council, transferring like payroll to large software programs, right? They cost a lot of money. We spent a lot...now that I'm getting going, a lot's coming back, so I'm sorry, I apologize. I was going to keep this brief, but, you know, women on council had a post-agenda with PWSA because of their smart meters had wrong bills, and they denied it, and it cost us millions of dollars to correct it. And so technology is not always what it promises, and it...but it always is expensive. So I will stop there. I appreciate it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation.
abstain, I'm going to abstain.
One abstention. Bill 998.
Bill 998, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement or agreements with Avanti to provide Cherwell ITSM system to license, implement, manage, operate, and deliver IT services to meet the needs of the City of Pittsburgh at a sum not to exceed $709,177.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. We have one bill, Bill 994.
Bill 994, a resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for the 519 East General Robinson Street, Pittsburgh 15212.
Oops, sorry, motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That exhausts our agenda for today. We do have a number of meeting announcements. Council's budget hearings will continue this afternoon at 1:30 p.m. with the Department of Finance and the Department of Law chaired by myself. Tomorrow, Thursday, December 1st, council's 10 a.m. budget hearings will be held with the Department of Public Safety, including the Administration, the Office of Community Services and Violence Prevention, the Stop Deviance Trust Fund, and the Office of Community Health and Safety. And at 1:30 p.m., council will hold budget hearings with the Public Safety bureaus, including the Bureau of Police, the Bureau of Fire, the Bureau of Emergency Medical Services, and the Bureau of Animal Care and Control. Councilman Cross will chair both budget hearing sessions. All budget meetings will continue to be livestreamed on the city's channel as well as on YouTube. And then lastly, on Monday, December 5th, at 1:30 p.m., council will reconvene the previously recessed public hearing on Bill 592 as relates to creating three new base zoning districts and other zoning amendments. Is there anything from members? I just want to wish our clerk the best in health and a healthy recovery.
Thank Ashley for filling in so much. You've been doing a great job. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
And our solicitor, he's sick, too.
Oh, wow. Be careful, everybody. Please be careful.
With that, we'll take a motion to approve the minutes in adjournment meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.